Okay, all right, I'd like to go ahead this time, call the meeting order. Today is Tuesday, January the fourth, twenty twenty-two. This is the regular scheduled meeting of County Council for the month of January twenty twenty-two. Council is holding the meetings virtually due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. There is a way for the public to stream the meeting online and also to make public comments at www.kaltoncounty.org/live. And also www.kaltoncounty.org comment. This time, I'd like to go ahead and call the role Vice Chairman Taylor.
Yeah.
Councilman Flowers.
Yeah.
Councilman Wetzel.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
Okay, this time, I'd like to ask if Vice Chairman Taylor will offer an invitation following by a pledge of allegiance.
Most gracious heavenly father, we come once again to say thank you. You've kept us from dangers seen and unseen. Colliton County is blessed. And we extend our prayers and thoughts and best wishes to counties and communities inundated with so much tragedy and despair. Thank you for Colliton County and our county council, the administration, the staff, other elected and appointed officials, every citizen, and all who benefit from what Colliton County has to offer. Your word declares that we should acknowledge you in all of our ways and you would direct our paths. You said by wisdom a house is built, so Lord, we pray for your blessing in this meeting. That we act with integrity of heart and humility is required that a steward be found faithful. God bless America, Lord bless Colliton County, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Taylor. Welcome everyone here this evening, I wish everybody a happy new year, hope everyone had a good Christmas and having a happy new year so far. This time, I'd like to go ahead and start on the agenda, item four. We have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December the seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Councilman Taylor, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Move to item five on the agenda, the administrator's briefing. Mr. Griffin. I'll turn it over to you at this time. You're on mute. You're on mute, Kevin.
How about now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
There we go. First of all, a couple of dates ahead coming this month with important meetings. January twelfth will be our formation meeting for the Accommodation Tax Advisory Board. I appreciate all of you getting some nominees there. We now have a quorum that we can move forward and get them formed and spend the additional accommodation tax, I believe, of about seventy-five thousand that they can lot to travel and tourism and other items here in the community. January nineteenth, the council at five thirty P M, that is a Wednesday. We will have the CPS Capital Project Sales Tax Program Ranking Meeting for the new sales tax ballot that will come up here next November. We will have that information, I'd hoped to have it out earlier, but our contractors have been a little behind. We had some additional things added kind of there at the end and we're just getting some jail numbers this week, but we will have that out to you no later than close of business on Friday. It'll give you two good weekends and a week to review that information. If you have any questions at all, because I'm sure this is going to create a lot of conversation, please give me a call and we can get together one-on-one and try to, you know, any details we need to hammer out before we get into meeting to make sure everybody absolutely understands what's in these proposals as we move forward. The only other item I just quickly wanted to discuss with you is we did really busy here in December, especially in the finance department, finishing our year-end audit. The audit wrapped up the fiscal year twenty twenty-one with a much, much improved fiscal year. It's twenty twenty, our total revenues were up about four point one million for a total of fifty seven, fifty-seven point four overall. This led to a total increase in fund balance across all funds, not just the general funds, include fire rescue, solid waste, and roads and bridges of about three million dollars. The general fund accounted for about thirty-three point five million of total revenue and had thirty-two point one million in expenditures with about a nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand increase in fund balance there. The increase offsets five hundred and thirty-eight thousand used in fund balance reported in fiscal, fiscal year twenty twenty, which brought us under the nine, nine million that we have been accustomed to, but we're now back over that to a nine point one million dollar fund balance, which represents twenty-nine percent of annual expenditures. As you know, by our budget ordinance and GASB requirements, we're required to be with at least twenty percent of annual expenditures there to stay in good standing when our bond ratings and such. We also received over seven hundred, any county that receives over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal grant awards must undergo a single audit, which reviews our internal controls and compliance with these various federal regulations. For fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we received seven point six million in federal funds either directly or passed through from various state agencies. That single audit was also completed. The county did not have any findings which will allow us to continue to be a low-risk entity there. The audit report in full, we presented to council in February. If you'd like to have any details on this as well, just let me know. Other than that, that's all I have for you this evening, Mr. Chairman and Council.
Mr. Griffin, Griffin, is this, that's fiscal year twenty-one. Do you know if that trend has continued for the first six months of fiscal year twenty-two?
Can you say that one more time?
We're six, we're now six months into the, really the fiscal year twenty-two, are we, is that trend kind of continuing or do you know?
It is, and that'll be in your council report and we'll get out later in the week. We'll have some good information on that, we're trying, we're tracking here, we're just getting January numbers in and we should have them by the end of this week or first of next week. And, excuse me, December numbers in now, and we'll have those out in the council report, it'll come out later in the week.
All right, and the, the meeting on January the nineteenth, that's that, that's virtual meeting?
Um, yes, sir, I was, we were going to discuss that, but it looks like we've got a pretty strong uptick. I know within the county and within the local government of some COVID cases popping back up, so that may end up being virtual as well, but we'll probably discuss that a little more in the next few weeks.
Okay. Question for the administrator? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to, actually, we do have to, before we move on, we have an emergency resolution. Twenty-two dash R dash oh-six, I'm going to move if we amend the agenda to add emergency resolution twenty-two dash R dash oh-six. It's a resolution to authorize the waiver of solid waste residential debris disposal fees.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll add the item as item F under new business. When we get to that point. Well, that brings us to item six on the agenda, old business, item A, second reading ordinance twenty-one dash O dash sixteen to reapportion Collin County Council East and West Districts to meet federal state regulation requirements based on United States Census twenty twenty population data.
So move.
We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? The only, the only discussion I guess I have is I know we've talked about, do we have any dates and locations for public hearing on this matter? Or do we want to set, set those, or how do we want to deal with this?
Mr. Chairman, I, I thought we had instructed the administrator to contact the school district office. I know they, they have been out of school for a while, I don't rather hear an opportunity.
They don't have any interest in participating with us. So, we're going to be doing it on our own.
Yes, sir, I have, I've reached out to the school district and provided them the information for the state revenue and fiscal affairs office. I was kind of had that on hold, waiting to see if we would hear back and they would have everything together. We can wait as late as about the first of February to do those meetings and still be in compliance. So, but if y'all want to just abandon that and move ahead on our own, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think I got an email from the chairman of the school board that basically stated that that they were going to have to do their own meeting. So, I mean, I, I'll verify with her again, but we need to go ahead and set some dates so we can try, I think, go ahead and get this thing done.
There again, that's probably a conversation we're going to have to have related to the COVID rules as well, because we talked about having those out in the community and probably need to have a discussion how we want to handle that.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item B, second reading ordinance twenty-one dash O dash seventeen to amend Title VI Animals Section six point oh-four dash one-oh definitions and section six point oh-four point four-oh restraint of the Collin County Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table this particular ordinance twenty-one zero seventeen. And let's try to have some public hearings or something on this. I probably, not exaggerating, probably have had twenty calls on this from dog hunters. And I think they just need a little bit of time for them to be heard and and for us to be heard in D and R, and what do y'all think about that?
I, I will certainly agree with you, I've had numerous calls and we have some comments tonight as well. I don't have any, any opposition to tabling it. I do think we need to go ahead and try to have a, some public forum where we can present to them the information, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there for starters.
It is.
We have, we can present to them the problem and the dilemma that we have. And then, you know, we can allow, allow for comments also, and I, I don't have a problem presenting the information. But, of course, I guess the code, you know, the only issue, I guess, is COVID, how, where we're going to do it and how we're going to do it. But, I don't have a problem with it, with us tabling it and giving us time to go present the information. So, I mean, I'll second your motion if that's what you're looking for.
I'll second, I'll second the motion. I, I agree. There's no reason why we shouldn't table this and get, get it about the, the table and and get factual information rather than disinformation.
Right, I agree with that. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? In that motion, or this ordinance will be tabled and we will try come up with a location, see if there's something we can do in January. Let's see if it'll work its way back into the February roster, but you know, again, I guess we're kind of at mercy of COVID at the moment, so we'll see, see what we can do. That'll bring us in item seven on the agenda. New business, item A, resolution twenty-two dash R dash zero-one to declare February as Black History Month in Colliton County.
So move, so move, second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Item C, resolution twenty-two dash R dash zero-three to approve acceptance of, of a grant from coastal electric cooperative in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for industrial infrastructure development.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? The only thing I'd just like to say is, again, you know, we, we're fortunate that we have some good cooperatives in the county. I'd just like to thank them for, for helping out, helping the county out.
Thank you.
And no other comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, item D, resolution twenty-two dash R dash oh-four to authorize the council department advertise for board vacancies. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Item E, resolution twenty-two dash R dash five to appoint members to board vacancies. We have tonight, the Collin County Fire Rescue Commission has three vacancies and the applicants are Gerald Britton, Laverne Pope, and Mark Farish. Collin County Land Use Zoning Board of Appeals has one vacancy and the applicant is Samuel Bethay. Is there a motion that we appoint these individuals by acclamation?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item F, emergency resolution twenty-two dash R dash zero-six. The resolution to authorize the waiver of solid waste residential debris disposal fees.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously, that'll bring us to item eight.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, quick question. Did we get both resolution twenty-two R zero-two and zero-three?
I didn't see twenty, well, zero-two, I don't think we did that one.
I thought we did.
We, it seems as if we did one, the, the first one, twenty-two R zero-two.
Okay, so you're saying I skipped two?
Correct.
Okay, all right, well, all right, thanks for pointing that out, then let's go back. Resolution twenty-two dash R dash zero-two to authorize acceptance and budgeting of various grants for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Next one, the next.
Yeah.
On a correction.
That one was done.
Yeah, item C. Item C.
Did that, that was coastal electric.
We did that, that's coastal electric.
That one.
I thought we got them all.
Y'all, y'all like making me like.
Oh, we did the first one, the black history, we did that one in this, we got them all, didn't you?
We got them all.
I think we got them all.
I think we got them all.
I stand corrected.
You know, too, either. I didn't, I didn't remember.
Yeah, I think what, just in case. Let's deal with resolution twenty-two R dash zero-two. To authorize acceptance and budgeting of various grants for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So move.
So move.
We got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
In the motion, that motion carries unanimously. Automate items for information and public record, we do not have any this evening. Item nine is public, public comments. I don't know if there's anybody online to make a comment, because I don't have that information, but I do have some here, I'll read into the record. This is a public comment from Jody Carter. It says, I am asking you as a U.S. military veteran, farmer, and proud native to not remove any of the language in the below ordinance. Six point oh-four dash oh-one-oh definitions running at large. Any animal shall be deemed to be running at large when the animal off the property, when the animal is off the property of the owner and not under the immediate or direct supervision of the owner or under the physical control of the owner or keeper by means of a leash or similar restraining device. In the case of hunting dogs actively involved in an ongoing hunt, the dogs shall not be deemed to be running at large so long as they are on the property legally and/or the owner or keeper is actively seeking to retrieve the dog. If the wording was removed as requested, it would be an end to all dog hunting in our county. No questions asked, it would open the door to allow South Carolina D and R the rights to charge anyone whose dogs crosses a property line on the lands. The animal is not welcome. This could, could, this could be a bird dog retrieving access, a, a hedgerow, a rabbit dog making his circle, a deer dog, coon dog, hog dog performing an act that was bred and created to do or just simply your household pet. I understand we have bad apples in every group, but ninety-nine percent of the dog hunters are not hunting with the purpose of harassing or aggravating another hunter. They are simply in love with the sport and the dog. I ask you to keep our houndsmen and bird dog handlers protected and to not let the outside influence of seasonal hunting transplants and neighboring counties impact Colliton traditions. Coming from an agricultural background, I have seen that allowing hunters to pursue deer and hogs with dogs is a major help in controlling our overpopulated deer slash hog herd. I invite anyone that thinks that we have a decreasing deer population to look at federal crop insurance data and add up the millions of crop dollars Los Angeles annually in our state to deer and hog damage. Nor are we liking automobile collisions with deer in county based on a simple drive down our highways each morning. Obviously, if any dog that is on land, which he is not welcome and is harassing livestock, personal property, and endangering safety, then we have a problem that needs to be resolved. Lastly, I thank each of you for your service to the county and I hope that each of you give this much thought consideration, God bless. I have a comment also from Kevin Brady. Says, I'm against this running at large amendment, this is nothing but a money-making scheme for the county. We elected y'all to have a voice for us. We will not tolerate y'all not working for us and will get voted out if this passes. I have a comment also from Mickey Joe Pie. I am concerned about the dog at large law that is being pushed through by our county council. I am a avid hunter in Collin County with hounds for deer and dog hogs. This law is, this law is, will affect a lot of people in the county that pays a lot of lease payments on properties that they have to hunt. I'm asking for all council members to rethink this law. This is our heritage and right to hunt with hounds. Trust me, I know someone is probably having a problem with one or two individuals that are probably breaking the law and giving dog hunters a bad name, but please don't take it out on the rest of us law-abiding citizens. We as dog men spend a lot of money in tracking equipment, but it's not all one hundred percent perfect and dogs do get on places that we as hunters don't want them there. You have some people that don't, don't even have enough land to be turning dogs loose on to begin with. That's, that's the ones who need to be punished. If you have one bad apple in the bunch, throw that apple away, not the whole basket. If this law needs to be put in effect, let the voters vote on the issue. This is our right, thank you, and I would like to hear from my councilman on this issue. He's got his phone number, eight four three nine oh eight thirty-three ninety-three, cell or email at mickiejo dot pie at P R T C dot U S. So, that was Mr. Pie. We've got, I guess I'm saying this correctly, Halasa Glover, Laysa Glover, and his comment is just simply concerned about this new law being, I'm a dog hunter. Those are the comments that I have. I don't know if, if we have any others or if there's anybody online, is anybody? Megan, do you have any?
We have two more comments.
Okay, I don't have.
A gentleman named Justin Miller commented and he said, we're sitting in front of the old jail building. We would like to have this dog ordinance knocked off the table immediately. We're here to vote this down today. And then, the Collin County Coalition of Rural Neighbors, there's no person's name on this one, commented and said, what is the process that should be taken in order to invite our councilmen to a virtual town hall? Our organization advocates for the rural areas of Colliton County. That's it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have received numerous calls from different hunters and support of getting rid of the last part of that, of letting that last part of the ordinance remain as is, as opposed of us of striking it.
Yeah, well, I too have gotten many calls, I've gotten approached in stores and Waffle House and Ace Hardware, Walmart, downtown Walterboro, all over the county, I mean, emails. People are highly concerned about this issue and we need to, like you say, take a hard look and see what solutions we can work with, with, with them to find some resolve.
Yeah, I think we need to look at this thing, like we said, we tabled the thing for the night.
Right.
We need to look at it and see what the problem really is and how we can work with, for the county as well as, as being compliant with the state law too. I think that's one of the issues that was brought up by D and R, if I remember correctly. And I think that's why it was brought to us originally. And so, maybe if we can get everybody together and get some factual information out there of exactly why, why this was brought to us and, and why we have it on the table, then I think that, that would be, that would clarify a lot of things that that people are clouding about right now.
Okay, well, we, we have tabled it tonight and decided to have a public forum. And I put a, put together some sort of presentation that shows the statutes and also our county ordinance. And then also, you know, I think it's important to look not only at those, but the proposed bill that came from the legislature in twenty eighteen, it never got out of committee, but we need to look at what potentially could happen as well. And, and I've got numerous comments, I've actually met with folks here at my office and gone through this and, and it's, you know, it's, there's a lot of misinformation out there as well, and I think we can dispel if we, if we have a meeting and put that out there, this is not a, certainly not intended to be, I know somebody's kind of saying it's a money-making. The county is probably not even enforcing these, these are not, as, as it relates to hunting dogs. Now, let's be clear, we already have this ordinance in place, I mean, it's, it's, as far as it relates to pets and other animals, you know, we're already, this doesn't change any of that, to make sure we understand that, that's already in place. The, the issue is with the wording as it relates to a hunting dog. And that's what I think that we need to put out there and show everybody the problem that we have between state law and county ordinance or regulation. And hopefully, if we do that, we can come up with a resolution that'll be fair to everybody.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it needs to be.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right. I don't, we don't have any other pub, public comments, are there any council members who have any comments at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I want to send, oh, go ahead, I yield to.
I yield to you, you're senior, go ahead.
I'm going to let me break the tie here?
I did want to, you know, just wish everybody in the, in the county a happy new year, but certainly our thoughts go out. I just heard today that Mr. Peyton McLeod passed away and his funeral was today. I didn't, I just didn't know if the rest of the council was aware of that, but certainly we sent our thoughts to, to his family and his business and everyone.
I echo that, I've known him for a long time and certainly send our condolences to his family.
Same here, my condolences to the family. I didn't know.
Mr. Wade, was you, I think you had a comment.
Okay, our, Mr. Chairman, I have, I have two actually. What can be done about the sale of ammunition via roadside in the unincorporated areas of Colliton County? We have people that sets up, set up in a truck and they'll pull. Uh, we have people that sets up, set up in a truck and they'll pull on the side of the road and start selling ammunition.
Um, is it this in the city or in the road?
No, this is, this is out in the rural areas.
Um, I'm not sure if there's anything that, I guess, of, of course, I, I, it would seem that there would be some regulation of the sale of ammunition for sure, um, but I, I don't know without research searching that. I don't know what, um, what ordinances there would be as far as solicitation of, of ammunition in the rural areas, but I certainly think it's something we can, we can check on. Now, are you, is this a, a situation where, um, the sale is a price gouging type thing, or is it a, uh?
Uh, no, I just, I just think that ammunition in times like this, when you can't get it out of us, out of a gun shop, but you can buy it black market off of the street with the crimes that we have in Colliton County, I don't think we are, we are doing ourselves a favor by allowing, uh, black market trucks to set up in our community.
Okay, I will, um, I'll try to get with the administrator and the county attorney and see if we come up with an answer to what, what if any violation, um, that create, that presents, or if it doesn't, if it's something that, uh, what are they, are they selling anything besides ammunition or?
Uh, no, basically, I just see the sign that says ammunition for sale and, uh, they, that's all they have on the little reader signs that are, that they have, uh, leading up to the locations that they are selling from.
Okay, yeah, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know without looking at it.
I don't know if it's black market or not, but I know the prices are not black market. You go there and try to buy something from them and they are super expensive. But I don't know if that has anything to do with anything, but they getting a premium for the, for the ammo.
But you can't find it in stores and then we have our individual with that much ammo around. That's, that's a, a incident waiting to happen.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Any other council comments?
Yeah.
Can somebody say something?
Oh, I, our Mister Chairman, I don't know whether I might be overstepping, but I have a, uh, a, an email that I received and it's addressed to the council. It came from Miss Gail Kidd. Did anyone else receive it?
Not that, not that I know of. It could have gone into my spam now.
Okay, uh, I don't know whether the administrative staff, Mister Griffin, or Miss Megan, or any of them received it. Did you all receive?
None, none that I'm aware of, Councilwoman Wade.
Okay. Would it be all right for me to read it, Mister Chairman?
Uh, if she sent it, I would assume she intended it to be, you know, to council. I, I don't have, I don't have a problem with you reading it.
Okay, all right. Well, there's nothing per, personal or anything that, that's in there. It just says to Colliton County Council, to the council, we are writing to make a request regarding a valued member of Colliton Community, Mister Leroy Wumble of Cottageville, South Carolina. Mister Wumble passed away in March of last year, and we would like to request your help in memorializing the special man. Our request is that you, the members of Colliton County Council, will agree to complete the park located at Pierce Road in Cottageville and name it after Mister Wumble. Leroy Wumble was a lifelong member of Saint John AME Church in Cottageville, where he worked with the male choir, the media ministry, and the Golden Group for several years, providing breakfast and served as the past presidents of the Sounds of Allen. Mister Wumble was an incredible vocalist that displayed a great passion for music, traveling city to city, displaying his love and admiration for God through music. But Mister Leroy Wumble ministry extended beyond the walls of the church. Most people knew him from his work in the community, but he was an exemplary example to others in the community. He mentored and coached young men through baseball, where he won several championships. Throughout his life, he advocated on behalf of his community through the political process by building strong and lasting relationships in South Carolina House of Representatives. And he worked tirelessly as an advocate for voting rights. Mister Wumble served in the United States Army for three years, and upon retiring from the military, he attended Trident Technical College, where he studied business administration and was a member of the Black Caucus. He served as an in-flight Master Chief at the Charleston Air Force Base, where he retired after thirty faithful years of service. Mister Wumble then served as the Director of the Low Country Community Action Agency for several years and retired a second time. Known for his commitment to provide community service, he received many awards, recognition, and accolades. We believe that honoring Leroy Wumble in this way is the right thing to do, given Leroy love for and dedication to his community and to the people whose lives he touched. Sincerely, Gail Kidd.
Yeah. All right, I certainly think it's, what was the park? Which park was the part I missed?
It's the park in Cottageville on Pierce Road.
Is that something that we're currently renovating, or is it?
We started some of the work out there on the property.
Okay, well, I certainly think we can put it on the agenda as item of discussion, um, next month. Everybody's in agreement to do that?
Yes, sir.
That's fair. If we, as long as we're not overstepping the rec commission, because they normally give those things, so we need to include them.
Well, we'll get, we can coordinate that through the, uh, Director of the Recreation Department over there. See if they, they have a recommendation, but we can discern.
Well, I don't, I don't think it would be up to the recreation or, or center to decide what, if we're gonna name something after someone, I wouldn't see where the recreation, uh, department would. Now, we can include them. I don't see anything with including them, but I don't think that they would be the final decision as to what the council names or something after a group or individual. But nevertheless, I appreciate you considering putting it on the agenda, Mister Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Will do that. Um, I've been notified, um, by Megan that we have, um, some more comments. So, um, Megan, if you want to go ahead and read those into the record?
Okay, um, Sherry Cassidy commented and said, there are a lot of people at the old jail building to vote against the ordinance with roaming at large. It should be left as it is. Uh, Halasa Glover, uh, Glover resent their comment. It was the same as before, um, that you already read, Mister Chairman. And then the Rural Coalition of Colliton County commented again and said, our concerns are not the clubs, though they appear to be problematic. We want to talk about a farmer's market in the Green Pond area slash Highway seventeen. The people need access to fresh, fresh food, fruits and vegetables. People should not have to drive eight miles to have access to fresh food. Also, no one answered my question as to how rural areas can no longer be the forgotten. We are the backbone of this county. We want to work with you all, not against you. Thank you.
Okay, can you, Megan, send us, I don't know who the Coalition of Rural Neighbors are. Is that the same group we're talking about?
Yes. Oh, it says Rural Coalition of Colliton County. I think the first one said neighbors in it.
So it's two different groups?
No, I think it's the same group. They just called themselves. Like, they didn't type it all out in the second one.
Okay, who, who, who heads up the coalition? Do you know that?
No, sir.
All right, we need to find, see if you can get them to give us that information so we know who to contact.
Okay.
All right, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Um, no other, I don't think we have anything else. Any other businesses? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Everybody have a good week. We'll see you, uh, see you soon, I'm sure.
All right, y'all take care.
Take care.